Joining us, I have an echo back there. Thank you. This is our work session for January 29th. We're here to hear from our emergency management department and emergency communications. And Sarah, did you have any opening remarks you wanted to start with?
Yeah, so I, this is the first of a series of work sessions that I want us to do here in the next couple of months, really focusing on, I'm just calling them department overviews. And I think we're just going to try to figure out departments that work together or work in similar spaces and might have one or two of them at a time come before the commissioners in this session at a four o'clock meeting to sort of do a more informal conversational update and overview of the department. When I talked to department heads and elected officials about this project, I said, you know, kind of tell us who you are briefly, share with us some past accomplishments that you've been through recently, what are your current challenges, and what are some future opportunities? So that is the format they were sort of given. And Jake Broadbent and our office is helping us coordinate these with departments. And I think we're going to start with that and then with those with departments. And I think we'll move on with conversations around community partners later, once we get through this, so.
I make a note that during our work sessions, we don't take public comment. We also don't make any decisions or take any votes. But if anyone has public comment or reactions to what they hear in the work session, you're welcome to come to our 5:30 business meeting.
So with that, I guess I'll, I don't know who's going first, if it's Tony or Robert. Tony? All right, go ahead, Tony. You want to introduce your staff?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tony Fosstrum, the Director of the Emergency Communications Center here in Douglas County. This is Sonia Beaza. She's the Deputy Director. We're going to kind of go through kind of quickly, just a overview of our center and what we do for the community. And I want to make sure that we leave plenty of time for questions. Because I know that our industry is a little bit different than most, and sometimes it piques a lot of curiosity. So I will make sure that we have enough time to be able to answer all those questions. So first, I want to talk about funding. I know that some of the commission is very aware because we just signed our new cooperative agreement in February of '24. But I'd like to explain how our center is funded to the new commission. And that is, we did do a new city-county agreement between the city of Lawrence, Udora, Baldwin City, and Douglas County for funding of the 911 Center operations. Currently, 33.33% of the operating budget is provided by Douglas County. And then the city of Lawrence is at 60%, and then the city of Udora is at 3.67, and Baldwin City at 3%. And the cities are charged on actuals, not on the budget, but on actually what we operate with. Separately, we also have what the 911 Saves Act, which is with the state of Kansas, and that provides us about $620,000 a year in operating capital. But it can only be spent on delivery of 911 fees or 911 calls. So I can't, we can't use it for personnel. We can't use it for a lot of things. It's mostly for technology. So, and that is by state statute. So we currently have a budget authority for 35 positions, including our administrative staff, administrative assistant. We have three managers, one for training, one for administration, and one for operations. And then we have four supervisors for every shift. We do run 12 hours a day. Our 24-hour day, 24 hours a day, of course, 12-hour shifts, so two shifts per day, or four squads. We also have a QA or Quality Assurance Supervisor, which does all of our quality assurance and also does a lot of our incentive for any type of accreditation that we're going for, which is something that we have started to do in the recent years. We also have four, what we call leads, which are basically mostly our training staff, who does our frontline training, and then our telecommunicators. We currently have 31 of our 35 positions filled, which in the 911 world is very good. Typically, in an average center, they're usually about 40% down. And we have four positions. We're actively looking for two. And we kind of hold two back for just those diamonds in the rough a little bit. But our actual operational mandatory positioning on a daily day-in, day-out basis, we can actually cover with 33 staff. So we're very close to being fully staffed.
What's your turnover rate here?
Microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Hi, Gene Dorsey. What's your turnover rate in frontline staff each year?
Right now, it's, we haven't really calculated our turnover rate over the last 18 months or so. But it's probably right about 15%. We actually have a very good culture in our center. And we've, we, most of our turnover is in trainees. So our staff that's already tenured is very solid. But getting into the 911 world, when you, when you go into that world and come on with us, most employees don't know what they're getting into. So our training turnover is about 50%, or maybe a little bit less. But like I said, I haven't actually done the true numbers on that yet.
But it occurs mostly during training, when they discover what they're actually doing and the stress involved and all of that.
Yeah, I would say probably 90% of our turnover is in the first, within the first six months of employment.
Thanks.
And I think we have some data on that that we could send, that we did for our annual report last year. And we also have some data on our average tenure, because we did that back before the PACE study, what the average tenure was of our employees.
It's just not current too right now.
Sonia, if you get that to me, I'll put it in the weekly memo.
Yeah, definitely.
And it sounds like amongst emergency communicators, we're kind of the outlier as far as like having that stable staff and people that stay. That's still fairly unusual in that field, isn't it?
It's very unusual. And actually, we have directors that call us and ask us, what do we do to keep our staff the way it is? We have, I'll just tell a little story, and I'm not going to name the county, but a county near us that is similar population is actually using remote, like traveling 911 workers from out of state because they're having such a hard time staffing their center and keeping staff. And that's something that we don't even have to think about because of the culture that we have in our center. And that's a, that's a scary proposition in my mind.
One other question related to that. What's your starting salary for somebody just walking in the door?
With the new pay study, we actually just changed that to $24.23 an hour, which we have hired to at that rate. And so even at our old pay rate, we were very successful. But the new pay rate is going to help us retain those individuals that were kind of on the fence of if they start going out into the community. Because our job is very stressful. The amount of stress that's in the theater of an opera of a 911 center is immense. And I don't think a lot of people appreciate what those telecommunicators do on a day-in, day-out basis.
And we were able to do that thanks to a lot of the people at this table for making it into a career that people actually want to get into rather than just a job or a hopping point to something else. So thank you for that.
So the 911 Center is, we have basically three pillars that we, that we, that we service the community with. One is the next-generation 911 system. So the incoming calls for the 911 system that we answer on a day-in, day-out basis, agency dispatch services. And then we are the owner and operator, maintainer of the K6 P25 radio system for Douglas County. We also perform the emergency medical dispatch protocols for the county. And we'll talk about a little bit here in a little bit. But we're also starting to go down the path of implementing the emergency fire dispatching protocols also. That was approved in last year's budget. So, and what that does is allows us to provide early arrival instructions, post-dispatch instructions, CPR, all the different medical priority just instructions to the caller in the event before the first responders arrive. A little bit of phone stats we wanted to share. In 2024, we average about 42,000 911 calls, about 200,000 administrative or non-emergency calls. And we performed about 35,000 outbound calls. And then the NINA standard, which is NINA is the National Emergency Number Association, which is an association that we are members of that does a lot of professional stats and, I guess, standards for our profession. They would like to see 95% of all 911 calls answered within 15 seconds and 97% within 20 seconds. And we are currently at 97% within 15 seconds. We were at 100% in '23, but the complexity of some of the calls, the call volume that is going up, we've dropped down to about 97%, but still well within the standard that we are trying to achieve. And our average 911 call answer time is 4.66 seconds. So you can see that even now, that 3% that goes above that 15 seconds, it's, it's not very much. It's just a few calls here or there that skews that time. Typically, what that happens is when we have a high priority call, when we have, you know, we'll have the center flooded with call, with 911 calls. And sometimes it's just hard to get to them all within the 4.66 seconds. So our staff does a wonderful job. Our K6 P25 radio system is a very complex system. And we'll be talking a lot about our P25 system in the years to come. But it is a five-site Motorola P25 soundcast system, which is the state-of-the-art radio system that is provided by Motorola at this date and time. We do have a microwave backhaul and also fiber links that go back to Salina that keeps the, the system up and running and connected to the core. We don't own our core. We are connected to the K6 system, which provides us this great radio system, but at an affordable cost. If we had to own our own core, that would be significant cost to be able to do that.
Is K6 a statewide entity then?
Yes, it's actually operated by KDOT, and we just connect into their core. So KDOT runs that, and then it's administered through the Kansas Highway Patrol. So we have about 1,600 radio subscribers. And about 400 of those 1,600 radio subscribers are Douglas County entities that we maintain the radios and the maintenance for those radios. And that's for, usually for the sheriff, Public Works, all entities within the county, so. These are the dispatch agencies that we dispatch for. We have the LDCFM or Lawrence County Fire Medical. And what I've provided here, just for a glance, I'm not going to go through them all, but I put them on the number of incidents last year that we, that we sent the units to. And these are actual individual incident numbers. So for law enforcement, that's going to be a little bit different because not every call that we send a law enforcement officer to gets an incident number. But these are actually the number of reports that they took.
How do you dispatch then to Osage Number Four for fire?
Osage, we actually, we will dispatch them. We, we don't track them the same way, but we do dispatch them by telephone. So we actually call Osage County, and then Osage County will dispatch them. And then we'll do the radio communications with them.
You know, that's been in conversation or something. Is that, is that the most efficient way? Or is that just the way it works with their system?
It's the way it's worked up to this point. One thing that Osage has done over the last 18 months or so is they've improved their, their system. And it's something that we're looking into, be able to actually be able to have a little bit more visibility of their, their, their system. They have our same radio system now, so it's easier to communicate via radio. But the CAD to CAD, to be able to actually see their units and who's available is a little bit more difficult. In the near future, we'll be coming, probably talking about web services through our CAD vendor, which is Motorola. And with those web services, one of the things we might be able to do is actually do a connection to their CAD system, be able to see when their units are available or not. But currently, right now, we have to contact them by phone, and they'll tell us who's sending, who they're sending. And then we can track their units from that point in time. But we can't, we don't have, we have no visibility on what units they have available or their incidents that they're working in their, in their community.
And a question on ambulance dispatch. Where do those show up in the numbers? Would it be in that big total under Lawrence Douglas?
Yes. We don't, we, I didn't break them out by, via medical and fire. I just, that was just one number for, for that agency.
Gotcha.
I could provide you that information if you want. Down at the bottom, one of the things I wanted to also note is that we, we do have some auxiliary agencies that we do dispatch for. Humane Society, the MRT, the Mobile Response Team for Burton Nash, Public Works. We do Kansas Wildlife and Parks, Corps of Engineers. There's a plethora of other agencies that we, we do service, but we don't really track them in the same way that we track our county entities.
Do they have the same radio system, or you track them in a different way?
They have their own radio, same radio system. They have access to our radio system. And we can, we can track their units when they, when they call out on something or tell us they're on a call. But we don't track their incident numbers because they're not an agency that we put into our records management system.
Got a question. For the mobile response team, are those coming through the 988 number and then get referred to you or direct calls?
Most of them are coming from 988. We do get some direct calls. We also get some from MIH or the Mobile Integrated Health Team from LDCFM. But most of them are coming from 988.
Thanks.
And then there's also some law enforcement referrals. So if law enforcement goes out and they indicate that they want mobile response or that's the most appropriate response, then they'll request that through us.
This is a, the mobile response team, we just started dispatching for them this year. That was a transition from the headquarters counseling to, to us. It's working quite well now. And with that, it's still kind of early in its operation. I imagine that'll expand over time, and we'll be able to bring even more service to the community. Talking about future planning a little bit, some of the things that are coming up in '25, '26, and, and into the future. In '25, we're bringing to the community for our dispatcher what we call Motorola Smart Transcription, which is going to be able to actually transcribe the phone calls. One thing that's exciting about that is they'll do Spanish translation into the center also. So we, we won't have to be as reliant on getting all the information from a translator. We'll still do that transfer to the translator, and our operation will stay the same. But we'll get, be able to glean a little bit more information through that conversation with the translator. And maybe we'll be able to provide a quicker service to our, to our people that are in need because we'll be able to actually listen, watch their, their conversation before the translator comes back to us. We're also looking at bringing in emergency fire dispatching protocols. That'll be probably, we'll be coming to you to talk about that next month and, and start that, that process. And then our Motorola Service Contract renewal for our radio system is also coming to the end of a 10-year contract. And we'll be talking a little bit about Motorola Service Contract by end summer. So that'll be a good conversation. Of course, '26 is FIFA 2026.
If I can interrupt you, what Tony's not saying, because Tony's nice. We anticipate that Motorola Service Contract going up substantially. And currently, it is supported solely by the 911 fee funds, right?
We just moved it.
That's right.
We swapped it.
We swapped because we knew.
Because it was going up more than we can support, so we swapped that with the SUA2. And put this, we kind of did some, some chess to make it work. But yeah, it will be substantially more. Coming out of a 10-year contract, typically we don't do tenure contracts for this reason because we come out of a tenure contract and money today is a little bit different than it was in 2014. With that also is that there's services that are needed now in 2024 that we didn't need in 2014, mainly cybersecurity that is desperately needed. Well, when you add services, there's going to be added cost. So how to do that and, and still try to do it in the best way is some of the things that we're going to be asking for some guidance and consideration.
And we're working with the, our city partners on the 911 Advisory Board with that. So they'll be a part of those conversations.
There's also conversations. I'm also on the Kansas 911 Coordinating Council Board or the new state Board of 911. And we are lobbying for some changes there to be able to get some funding, not being very successful at this point in time. But it's something that we are, are trying to at least engage with the legislation to be able to, to help us out in those regards also. Of course, 2026, we were talking earlier about FIFA 2026 coming. That's going to be a great challenge and also a good opportunity to practice some of our interoperability with our partners in a more relaxed setting than an emergency. So that'll be great, whether bringing a lot of training to the area through the SWIC, which we're going to try to really take advantage of and really expand a lot of our staff's horizons on interoperability. And then also.
Tony, I've asked, just as I keep interrupting you, I'm going to ask Robert to bring kind of an update on our roll cut planning process to the Commissioners in the next couple of weeks in Muslini, just so we can keep you, get you up to speed as to where we're at on that. So more to come.
Perfect. And then, of course, the new public safety building. Moving a 911 center is something I never thought I'd ever do. And while it's here, and we're excited, and it's going to be a lot of work, but it's going to be great. And to be able to be in a building that is designed for a modern 911 center will be amazing. So thank you all for, for your support with that initiative. Now the work, real work starts to begin. So, but we're excited about that. And then we were talking earlier that we were, earlier today, we're in Salina talking with Motorola about the, some of the infrastructure upgrades coming. That's going to be between now and 2031. There's going to be some significant upgrades to that system. Don't want to get really deep into the weeds right now because I don't really have a lot of details. And I know there'll be a lot of questions. But as soon as we get details, we'll bring it to you and let you know what, what that is. There is some discussion right now to be able to maybe get that funded by the state. So, which we will be lobbying for. So if that happens, that'll be, it's always, economies of scale is always a little bit easier to swallow than, than when you're trying to do it as a, as a smaller entity. So we're going to, we're going to really push for that to happen. And I hope that in the future, we'll be able to bring that good news. That's all I have. We'll stand for any questions and let Robert go. And then if you have anything at the end, we'll, we're an open book. We love to talk about our industry.
I had one question about the cost. Lawrence pays roughly two-thirds. The county pays one-third, forgetting about Udora and Baldwin for a minute. By state law, is the county totally responsible? And then we're recouping money? Or is it whatever the agreement is between city and county?
It's whatever the agreement is. You know, we are somewhat, what, we are unusual in this community that we have unified dispatch. Last time I checked, Johnson County had single dispatch for fire medical, but had six or seven law enforcement answering points. So every community does it a little bit different. Our agreement is based off of, and Tony and Tony will correct me if I'm wrong here. We agreed upfront that the county would pay a third as the host of 911. We wanted it to stay a county-wide function. So we started from that place of we were going to pay a third. That is, and then the rest of the distribution is based off population minus the unincorporated area. So that's how we divided out the percentages for Lawrence, Baldwin, and Udora. If you did it totally by population, we would pay, the county would pay much less than a third for the unincorporated area. But we wanted to have us a larger stake so that we could, you know, as trying to, since we are the home of 911. So that's how we based it. It's, it's going to be paid off actuals. We're going to, we're easing Baldwin and Udora into their, their portions. I think next year is the, is this the last year? '25 is the last year of the phase in, and then they will be paying their percentages. We do charge an administrative fee of 10%, which is what has been our agreement with the city of Lawrence on our other agreements is that if you're, if you're the home of it, you can charge a 10% administrative fee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Robert Beneki, the Director of Emergency Management. Our Deputy Director is in training this afternoon. His name is John Steppich, so he couldn't be with us today. We do have a vision statement and a mission statement. But the main thing to know about us is that we coordinate and collaborate. We support first responding agencies. We're more of a behind-the-scenes. We're not a first responder entity. And that's how we help. This slide right here about statutes, regulations, and codes, I wanted to just show it to you. We don't need to go into it, but I just wanted you to know that there are some, some binding and, you know, documents, some statutes, administrative regulations that says we have to have an emergency management agency. And we have to have a local emergency planning committee, which is, we represent the right to know. So there's a, the board, you guys are recently familiar with the code and the resolution that, that you passed here recently. And if, you know, reading through that, you'll see that, how, how some of those other statutes come into play. Probably the, the main one here to be thinking about is when there's a declaration of emergency, a disaster. So when that happens, you know, I, as a director, could come to the chair, whoever was the chair at the time, and say, hey, and tell you what's going on, you know, give you a good update on the situation and ask for you to approve a state of emergency for our county. I can get that verbal and then follow up within, writing within seven days. So that's kind of the main thing here for you guys to, to be thinking about and know. Here's our, our team. We are funded, the county funds two full-time positions, myself and Deputy Director. Our planner, Josh Taylor, and our program specialist, Josh is a full-time employee. Aaron's half-time. Those positions are funded by a grant, Emergency Management Performance Grant, which has been a solid grant for many, many years, many, many years. And although we had a 10% reduction last year, and we're looking at another 10%, well, who knows now what the reduction will be if it's around. But I just wanted to make sure that I brought that up, that they're grant-funded. The duty officers are, we have two duty officers. And their, their, their purpose is, you know, one week a month, they're on call 24/7. We always have somebody on call. The other duty officers are John and Josh to, to take a week out of the month. And they would be the point of contact for anything that comes up after hours in the community. This is a very busy slide, and this is how most of us know emergency management. We know that, you know, we prepare, respond, we recover, we mitigate, we protect, we prevent. You know, there's a lot, a lot going on there in that slide. And if you look at our, our logo, it's got it going in a circle like that. It's, it's not really how it works. It really doesn't work in a circle like that. So this is the slide I like to talk about right here. When you want to know what we do, usually when we're in the community, somebody will say, what do you do? And the best way to relate them to us is say, we, we push the button to turn the sirens on for severe weather. And then all of a sudden, they're like, oh, okay, that's you guys. That's all you do. But, so I like this, this illustration because, you know, we spend a lot of time in support systems at the bottom of the ad. you know, we spend a lot of time in support systems at the bottom of the X. This is what we're doing every day and in our office, planning, strategic planning, emergency operations, planning, finance, budget, grants, those kinds of things. So we spent a lot of time down there in the bottom. At the same time, we're reaching out, you know, if you go to the left, there's stakeholder readiness. That's the work we're doing with our partners, our first responder agencies. Those continuity of operations, continuity of government, planning events, training exercises. All of those things with our partners will work in there and stakeholder readiness. Community resilience is what the work we're doing out in the community with with businesses, with with just the general public, we do presentations, outreach, quite a bit of outreach and and educating public on how to be resilient, how to take care of yourself in emergency, how to take care of your family, how to take care of your friends, your neighborhoods. You know, some of that work we do with our community emergency response teams, it's a group of volunteers. On that other slide, you saw we have 54 volunteers and they're part of that group. But all this work we do in these three areas brings us to, I should say, like, these three areas in the X or blue sky, everything's just fine. And it takes us to the operations phase at the top. So that's what we're preparing for, the bad day, the disaster, the emergency, the big planned event. You know, I think this is the easiest way for us to think about it and share with you of like, this is how we work and how we get to 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 the operations, to the emergency operations center activation, those kind of things that you may have heard about. Emergency Operations Center, if you haven't been over to our to our building, here, we have an emergency operations center. It's, there's a photo of it in operation during the 2019 tornado. A lot of people get in that room. And what happens in that room is we have, and the emergency operations plan, emergency support functions. Sixteen of those functions are people like communications, they're a function, police is a function, fire, rescue, hazmat, public information, and they all have a place at the table. And the work they're doing is really supporting the work in the field. So if there's a a huge incident, let's just say that back in 2019, when the tornado came through, big, big incident. You know, we we did a full activation of the EOC, brought all those partners in. But we're not coordinating what's going on on the ground. We're assisting those incident commanders, those chiefs, those, you know, police fire chiefs, those folks and helping them get the resources they need. And that makes me think about the state of emergency piece I talked about earlier. How we get to that is when we've exhausted our resources. So if I'm coming to you saying, hey, we need to 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 declare a state of emergencies because we need additional resources from the state, from the federal government, things that we don't have local, that we need to have that that blanket state of emergency, that state of emergency will also through documentation, help us with any federal funding that may come to reimburse for things that we do to mitigate the the response. So here's some of the partial list of the people that would be in the EOC at any given time. It's not a complete list, but just to kind of give you an idea, we also, you know, you'll see some hospitals in there, Red Cross, you know, some of those NGOs. You know, all of those people, all of those agencies play a part in what we do. Yes, sir.
I didn't see a spot for Commissioner on that list. Is that on purpose?
You're in the next room?
Okay.
Yes, sir. But there is, there is a place and it's in there's a policy group and that's where we we need your help for for larger, usually financial decisions or decisions that are going to affect life and property. That's where we're going to want you to be. And 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 we would want you to also I'll just say, remind you that we do have a what we call a joint information center. It's a public information group. PIOs, Carrie, Brett, George Dippin Brock, they they run the group for the county. And, you know, there's probably 20 ish PIOs and they come together in the emergency and they create the messaging and all that media, public information comes from one place. So if there are constituents, you have, you know, things that come to you and you you feel like you need to go back out and post, we would ask that you would do it through the joint information center so that there's one voice and it doesn't confuse the public and they know what's going on. So this slide was a lot shorter until until yesterday. But we, you know, unified command for FIFA. So we I won't go deep into this because Sarah just said that I'm going to come back and talk to you. So but we, for the planning of this event, this huge, or events that will be coming up in 26, we created a unified command structure and this is kind of what this is what it looks like. This is a variation of it. And what it does, it gives us an organized method to go through the planning process, to request resources and you know, staff, mutual aid agreements, all those kind of things. And so we're in emergency management, we are the planning section. So we facilitate the incident action plan, what we call it, and we facilitate the meetings. We meet every two weeks right now. Let me show you that. The other thing we do is planned events. So you know, the NCAA championship celebrations that happened here and Lawrence. It's a pretty big deal. And so we activate the emergency operations center. I'll give you an example, a few years ago, when we did this, we had over 300 law enforcement officers here that we brought in from other areas, fire, medical assistance from other areas. We needed the help. Knowing that win or lose, there is potential for for civil unrest or people to get hurt or so. So so we're actually, we're having our first meeting tomorrow with Lawrence Police and Emergency Management to just start talking through this planning process to get ready for if in fact KU makes it to the to the championship and those games are played and we're prepared for those celebrations here. Another hot topic is lithium ion battery response. I sit on, I have a seat on the Commission for Emergency Planning Response, the Governor's Commission for the State. And this topic is on the table. We're in the process of writing a white paper because it's so important, because first responders are challenging, challenged to get these fires out, to to deal with these, mitigate these these fires. So we are, we're actually hosting a couple of trainings this year, coming up here in May on a grant that we received and
What kinds of settings are you talking about for those lithium ion battery fires?
Settings like
What kinds of settings are you talking about?
So so obviously, there's, there's, there's the storage. And the concern is obviously the Panasonic plant coming in next door, but along with the storage is the transportation and 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 the, you know, these batteries are in everything and they're in scooters, they're in bikes, they're and the safety, you know, you know, there's the other, the other committee on the on the CBR, this commission I'm talking about, they're doing a public outreach for the state to educate folks on the danger of these, especially if you damage, potentially damage for fire. And but yeah, they're, they're just, there's really the the, having difficulty putting, and and the dangerous fumes and gases that are associated with it. And so it's, it's, it's something that needs to be addressed and and the disposal. And and Kansas right now, I I say Kansas, all states are struggling with what to do with these batteries. You know, people are throwing them in the trash and there there's trash trucks that are catching fire and there's, there's millions of dollars just just happening. So so that's the focus on lithium ion. So a couple of training classes are going to come up for our first responders here soon. We're going to do an exercise in resource management, which is basically, we're going to we we help the rural fire departments with resource management when it comes to fires out out in the rural parts of the county. So we're going to be doing an exercise next month, working with them. We're also thinking about the move to the new building. So won't be as intensive for us as it will be for for Tony and his crew. But we know that timeframe is if it's in the summer, around the time that the FIFA is here. So there's some logistical things we're thinking about. Again, construction timeline is going to drive that for us. And then this next list right here, I have five things. The Emergency Management Performance Grant, HMEP Grant, hazardous materials, emergency preparedness grant, which funds those trainings, it funds commodity flow studies, funds exercises. We get that grant every year. We we apply for for a different project. The BRIC, which is infrastructure to communities, which is governments can apply for money, Homeland Security Project Funding, FEMA Public Assistance. They were all on that list that was put out yesterday by the White House. Those are all things that are concerned concerning to us. And then today that was rescinded, but we don't really know what where that is. But but we're watching it, you know, we're concerned about it. Those are, those are tools that help us do what we do.
Question, so all of those are government grants, not state grants?
So, yes, yes. And that they come from the federal government and funnel through the state. So we apply through the state, but it's actually federal money. And so then I listed at the bottom of this slide, some recommended training for you as Commissioners. A few of these, most of these actually can be taken online, independent study. I would just recommend that if you, in some free time, take a look at, you know, especially the IS 700 and the 100, that gives you an introduction to incident command systems, the NIM system. Those are the operating languages that we work under, the structures we work under. The 908 is also online, the emergency for senior officials. Basic EOC functions. The G402, I just, I don't know, Sarah did
Yeah, I have not sent it to the Commissioners. There, there's an opportunity coming up in February for some in person G402 classes and one of them's in Manhattan. There are two sessions in Manhattan, so I'm going to send that to Commissioners if you're able to attend and would like to attend in person. It's not offered very often. But it, so it might be an opportunity to take that class. There's one, I think the other one is in
Further away.
Yeah, like Augusta. Yeah.
And if if those aren't attainable to you, we can consider hosting one local. If we can get that, make that happen. So but that's a really good, especially for for new Commissioners to to go to that class and know what your, what your responsibilities are in times of emergencies and disasters. So so you'll have that slide. You can look at that recommended training. And then that's all I have.
Robert, maybe before you get quite into questions, I think you missed a past accomplishment that I'd like you guys to talk about. Specifically, and you probably can stop sharing if you want, related to the work you did with the City of Lawrence and the development of their emergency continuity of operations planning and their emergency operations planning, because I think that's important part that, you know, we know when the EOC gets activated, you know about your storm sirens, you're aware of that part, but the work you do to assist other agencies is really important. And that was a really big project.
For reminding me of that. So we so the county resolution that that you guys approved that, well, it's going out to the cities, and what that says is that they they agree that we will serve them as emergency management for their city. And so the cities don't have, the City of Lawrence does not have their own emergency management department. So we work closely with them. And one of the things that that they did not have was an emergency operations plan for their city. So our staff spent about a year working with their staff and drafted a pretty intense plan for the City of Lawrence. I'm not, I've not been told that they adopted it yet. But it's, it's on their, it's in their wheelhouse now, but a lot of hours and time working on that plan. And I'll tell you, our own plan is renewed every five years. Although we can make changes to it. We make changes to annexes and support functions anytime there's a need to. But that base plan is up for renewal with the state every five years. So yeah.
Robert, you mentioned resource management for the rural departments. Can you just talk more and explain what that is and when that happens?
Sure, sure. So because there's, they're, they're not staffed with emergency management, we we will work with community outreach. We'll, we'll go into those smaller cities and and do classes, education with citizens. We will work with our our police and fire and those cities to help them plan, not, you know, for events and help them plan. You know, you know, like, like the Maple Leaf Festival, be a good example, involved in the city. We helped them last year create an incident action plan, which is their guidance for the, for for what they're going to do and respond to during the Maple Leaf Festival. So we're in the cities collaborating with with those officials and those first responders. Just as if they were here, counting, you know, and no, I'm missing.
I guess I'm thinking of
Sending me a softball and I'm just
When we have like multiple grass fires going on at the same time in the county and that emergency management will stand up that resource management and we go and man the stations during that time. So
That's, and I mentioned that earlier, the resource management, you know, the grass fires are huge, especially in the spring. And our assistance to them is is to help them get the resources, help them manage what they have. And then if additional resources are needed, we we look elsewhere to bring other counties, if needed, to bring those resources in so that so that one city, you know, Baldwin's not sitting, sending all the resources, sources up to Udon to help. Now Baldwin doesn't have any resources. So we're, we're helping them manage their resources and gaining other resources. And taking that higher level look at what's going on with the incident. And that will determine whether we escalate into additional activation of the Emergency Operations Center, bringing more partners in to help and and collaborate, whatever that, whatever that fire is doing or whatever that emergency is happening out there.
Tony and Sonia, I'll ask, since Robert gave us a quick list of some of the federally funded programs that we've relied on and that staff some positions. Are there certain things, programs or or resources or otherwise within ECC that you've identified that are directly correlated to federal, funded by federal dollars that are passed through? I couldn't think of any grant funded positions, but I didn't know if any of the technology or other stuff might be relevant.
Not federally. Most of all of our grants, if we do grants, are done through the state. And then it's serviced through the state. So and then typically they're one time purchases. So we don't have any ongoing federal funding. The only, only funding that we get outside of the county is taxpayers is the nine one one fund, and that is done through the AT&amp;T or your, your Rlex with your wireless nine one one fees that's charged per subscriber. That is not a federal program. That's, that's a state program.
Thanks for that clarity. Robert, I'm curious about what our county's emergency management looks like in relationship to or coordination with other emergency management departments in the region. You talked a little bit about being, having a seat on the statewide board or commission appointed by the government governor, but I'm also thinking just regionally, especially being so close to other state borders. And thinking about FIFA coming, and I know we're going to get a later update, but just curious about what that typical regional management or coordination might look like when it's activated.
That's really a good question. But in in blue sky days, we have a north, it's northeast regional Kansas Emergency Management Association. We have an association for the state, but we have a regional association. Every month, all of us emergency managers get together and have those conversations about, you know, what's, and trying to help each other out and sharing ideas. When it comes to FIFA, we're tied in with Mark and and attending those meetings, especially especially safety, security piece there. So that collaboration is happening. Kansas City, Missouri Police Department is heading up those meetings, which encompasses Johnson County as well over there. But no, we, we, we have a really good relationship with them. And I will say now that we don't anticipate here in Douglas County, getting resources from the east. We know that those resources are going to be tied up. So as we, as we continue to move forward and plan, we know we're going to have to go somewhere else to get more police, more fire, those other types of resources we're going to need here locally. We typically rely on over there.
Also say some, you know, if it's a public health related emergency event, there are communications that come through both Kansas Department of Health and Environment, Kansas Department of Emergency Management have protocols to contact emergent, public health and emergency managers. So they're also, you know, very, very engaged with us from that sense too. Doesn't happen too often, but you know, even communication on bird flu and those types of things are come through Robert's team and we're made aware of as well.
Thanks. Yeah, I was thinking about, I was going to give some more examples like public health emergencies. And then also obviously natural disasters. The, the tornado is a perfect example of it crossed into another county in that instance, you know. And, and oftentimes natural disasters touch many communities. So as, you know, we, in our conversation recently with L D C F M, and throughout the time, we've talked about their development of mutual aid agreements. And I wonder, this sort of question for both emergency management and emergency communication. I, I guess I'm curious to know if, if like more formal sort of mutual aid agreements or M O Us exist. It sounds like there's certainly some structure around regional collaborations that meet regularly. I'm not sure if that looks similar for E C C, but just curious to understand that landscape a little bit more about if formal agreements sort of exist or what does the process look like for calling on additional resources as you're referencing it? I keep defaulting to mutual aid, which is very much a first responder.
So, so Kansas has, I'm trying to think of the acronym, it's E M A C, emergency management. You can't think of it, but what this does in times of emergency, it's, it's a, it's a system where you have to opt out. So everybody's opting. So we can ask for resources from another county and they can come. And we don't need that M O U at the time if it's under emergency. So, so that's really helpful. And then there's also, when it comes to assistance in the state, there's an incident support team that is managed and trained. And so, you know, an example with the tornado where we had it, you know, Leavenworth had it, you know, other counties. Folks from that team came to help us manage those incidents, knowing that we're going to be overwhelmed and need resources and, and help us through the event. So they're there, they're training.
And, and, you know, in addition to sometimes our first responders, so fire departments getting called in to respond to other parts of the state. We've had trained members of our emergency operations team go to other places to help provide that support. You know, specifically remember that when Greensburg happened, we sent a contingent of folks out to Greensburg, including the county clerk, to help, you know, stand up some different operations out there. So it's, it's, it's not as, it's not formal agreement based. But I think really in the emergency management system, the state sets a strong structure for it that governs a lot of that work.
That's what I was hoping the answer might be and kind of was getting hints at. So it makes the most sense to me that it is. And I'm glad to know that it's a opt-out situation and that there doesn't have to be so much work to develop those agreements independently.
So internally, inside the county, we have mutual aid agreements within the fire districts that are formalized. And then outside, we have some also. But under E M A C, most those are understood. Those are just formalizing agreements that are already done and, and agreed upon. It's very rare when we call for mutual aid from another township or another community or another entity that, that we, we don't get a response unless they're in a position where they are unable to respond. The, the formal agreements are good because you, you know that, that there is a formal way of, of being, of who's coming, for, for what situation. Because especially in the fire service, you want to make sure that you're getting the same type of, of training, response and personnel and equipment to service your community that, that you're needing. But it's not unnecessary. Those, those, those mutual aid agreements under E M A C are, are very strong.
So we stay, as we stay connected in with the state emergency operations center in times of emergency disaster, that's the chain of command. And they're able to get federal resources. They're, they're able to get resources from other states to bring in and help us locally. So we work through their operations center.
Commissioners, what other questions do you have for these two organizations, two departments?
Do, do you partner with like any other entities? Like do either of your groups do like test and learns or pilots to like test out, whether it be the mobile response team or M I H? Are you looking at like any like virtual like triage?
Am I understanding you correctly? Are you asking about like maybe telemedicine or a nurse navigator within the dispatch center? That's something that we've looked into. It's not something that we've actually pursued or took the steps to look at what it would look like to implement within our agency, but it's something that we try to educate ourselves on and be aware of what the options are. When Chief Llewellyn was still here with L D C F M, it's something that we had talked to him about as we looked at their system and what changes might best benefit the community.
So 24 months ago, so we went through a process with the Harvard Kennedy School G P L process, which is the government performance lab on alternate 911 response. We did a lot of work with them to identify different ways that we can support the community in alternate ways than sending officers to, to respond to situations that they're not fully or well equipped to. I mean, earlier I said that, that we were kind of at the start or the, the initiation process. We actually have identified several different things that we could potentially do, but we're trying to do it in a very thoughtful and systematic way. So that way we're not spinning wheels or, or using resources in a way that is not appropriate. And then pulling back, kind of doing it in a very slow, methodical way to make sure that we're doing it what's best, what's right for our system. Because if you look at a lot of other systems around the country, they do it very, very differently. And some of the things that we've, we've already learned and we've adjusted. And I, I can imagine we'll continue to adjust over the next, you know, these type of programs don't just become great in, in a short period of time. So, you know, over the several, next several years, I imagine it will continue to evolve. And we'll be able to continue to get more comfortable with, with some of these processes and be able to provide more services as we go.
And just to add to that, we did implement, I've last year, a little over a year ago, transferring calls to 988. So if someone calls 911 and they don't necessarily meet the criteria for needing law enforcement or fire, medical to come out, and they meet the criteria for 988 services, then we can transfer them. And we often have callers that can only reach 911 because of their phone service. They don't have service. And so we're able to facilitate getting those callers to 988 where they otherwise would not have been able to do that.
Are you able to follow up on those outcomes for the 988 calls?
It's a kind of falls under the 988 bucket. And I can have Bob talk to you more about our work with our crisis line and 988.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we have like a bidirectional like loop where you're able to actually track or understand what happens after you transfer a particular call. If you both are, if there's any like sharing of data and/or like feedback?
It's kind of interesting because we get some data, we can get some data, call data, but we don't get details. And a lot of that, there's a lot of HIPAA considerations. There's a lot of, there's a lot of considerations with the trust of, of the mental health community and the law enforcement community, what's, what's allowed to be shared across those platforms. And that's kind of where I was getting to from before, was just like, as we continue to evolve this process and get more comfortable together, as long as it's legal and we can do that, I think there's going to be more sharing, but right now it's very limited.
Thank you. And are you having individuals sign up on sharing agreements, data sharing agreements?
So you're talking about our work with my resource connection, connection. And so I'd like to get you, would like to do more of an update on that because our, that's where the data sharing agreements come through is through my, my resource connection. And 911 data is very accessible, so it's in the system, but then there are. Not yet, okay.
Working on it.
We're, we're working.
But other, but like emergency room, a lot of other corrections data and criminal justice data is in that system, so in EMS. So that's, you're, you're right on our, right just ahead of where we're thinking about.
Just on the cusp. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, just super curious, so appreciate it. And sometimes we only talk about programs that are in place. That's why I was just asking if you have any pilots or test and learns, just to see if there are any that are currently running. And if not, that's, that's totally fine too. But I was just kind of curious. So just appreciate the work that you've already done thus far and really looking forward to partnering as we move forward.
Commissioners, we've reached about that time. Are there any final questions or final comments from the two, two departments?
I would just like to invite you, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Dorsey, to, to come over and see our spaces. You have an opportunity and we can be flexible anytime that works for you. I'd like for you, I'd like for you to come over and see it.
Likewise, we would, we'd like you to come over and, and we, we are very proud of, of our center. And we really enjoy talking about our, the world of 911. And so we would love for you guys to come over and, and kind of step into our realm a little bit and learn. It's very exciting.
I went through that as part of the Sheriff's Academy last spring, but I'd be happy to come back again.
This time you can answer some calls.
Thank you so much for the work that you do for Douglas County, for residents on behalf of commission. And we really appreciate you being here. And it's always exciting to hear about your work. And, and this may yet prompt other questions from commissioners. They know how to reach out and find you for those too, but really appreciate the updates. Thank you. With that, we are recessed until our 5:30 business meeting.
Thank you.